Again, item from this place is homemade cooking. Yes. My wife in Tortas in Aloha, she's been in the company for 20 years. She makes every single day, she makes all these fresh waters. And we also have fresh juices. You can order wherever you like. I'm the one that do every single recipe in this place. As a homemade plant, yeah, we do it like maybe four times a week. Mexican dessert. Yeah, I've been cooking for 45 years now and this 2025. So when I came and opened this Tortas in Aloha, I learned about the community and the very kind people, very nice. Yeah, I love the people from Corona. So I put so much effort and heart into it. We are in 1520 West 6th Street and we in the Goma Chapel Center.
Hello, Corona!
City of Corona, you guys ready? Okay, we're gonna get you on that dance floor.
You having a good time so far?
I feel good.
All right, what a beautiful summer night. Thanks for joining the City of Corona and getting together for all these concerts.
Thank you, Corona!
I'm Marcus Williams and this is MW Athletic. As an NFL superstar, coming back to my community is really what I wanted to start MW Athletic for. You wanna do kettlebells, swings, strength, fastest, most explosive athletes come in here, ready to work, and you'll get to where you wanna get to. And if you don't grind, you don't shine. And if you don't shine, you don't eat. The mission and vision behind MW Athletic is to create the fastest, most explosive athletes in any given sport that they choose to be in, whether it's high school, college, or professionals. We are able to help training, performance training, or speed training. We have our PerformX treadmills where we are able to do our speed zone to make sure these athletes are running fast, just like cheetahs, you know, be the best that they can be when they go out there and perform. We're really out here in the community trying to give back the best possible way we can and giving scholarships back to the kids who are in high school. What makes MW Athletics different from other gyms in Corona or other places around is our culture, our dedication to having our relentless pursuit of excellence. And everybody here in Corona knows that each and every day they come in here, they're gonna leave off better than when they came. If you wanna book a tour, go to our website, mwathletic.com. We are located right next to In-N-Out off of Surface Club. Grind, shine, and eat.
Chris Yoshioka, he's been my mentor, he's been my captain.
I guess I'm proud to say I've got the lowest paramedic card number, but some of the things I-
Started the first IV.
Yeah, I started the very first IV in the city of Corona as the first paramedic. Corona's pretty unique. What also makes Corona super unique is, in which I'm so proud of being a part of this family, is our local 3757 Firefighters Association. We're heavily involved in the community. We adopt many kids, kids who have cancer, kids going through hard times. We make their day a little bit special. I mean, when a fire engine pulls up at their house with lights on and we can get them gifts or just show them support that we're there for them and we help them out.
Killers, let's do this, ladies. Oops. Let's not do the pledge. Let's start this.
Good evening and welcome to the Corona Public Library Trustee Meeting. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the approval of the Library Board of Trustees' Meeting Minutes of August 26, 2025. Do we have a motion? From anyone?
I move that we accept the minutes of the August meeting.
And I second.
Thank you. A motion was made by trustee Heinemann and seconded by trustee Leonard. Ms. Backus, will you please take a vote?
Chair Ayesha Kennerly.
Approved.
Trustee Heinemann.
Approved.
And trustee Liddell.
Of state.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous Library Board of Trustees' items. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the Library Board of Trustees, a trustee or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Board, graphs, stats, calendars, and flyers. Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the board, graphs, stats, calendar, and flyers as presented.
Do we have a second? Okay. A motion was made by trustee Leonard and seconded by trustee Heinemann. Ms. Backus, will you please take a vote?
Chair Kennerly.
Approved.
Vice Chair Leonard.
I approve.
Trustee Heinemann.
Approved.
And trustee Liddell.
Approve.
Persons wishing to address the Library Board of Trustees on items listed on the agenda are requested to identify themselves and state the matter on which they wish to comment. No action will be taken on matters not listed on the agenda. The Library Board of Trustees would appreciate your cooperation in keeping your comments brief. Ms. Backus, are there any speaker cards from the public?
No speaker cards from the public.
Are there any written comments from the public?
No written comments from the public.
Okay, we're gonna move on to administrative reports. This report will be introduced by Community Services Director, Ms. Donna Finch, and report given by Library Manager Danielle Whittington.
Thank you, Chair Kennerly. So we're happy to bring our October library report to the trustees this evening. The report is a little bit lighter than usual. We've had some of our summer activities winding down. We're now full-blown into school season, so we're busy with all of the kids there and the students there doing all the library activities. But we do have some updates to share with you this month. One is gonna be an announcement of an expansion of the Zipbook Program. This is gonna be a new way for patrons to be able to access Zipbooks through an ebook format, and Ms. Whittington is gonna share some more information about that. We're also excited for the upcoming California Library Association Conference. This is a conference that is held every year. The trustees, of course, are always invited to attend, and this one is gonna be a local conference in, just right next door in the city of Riverside. So very excited to have them just right next door to us, and hopefully we'll have some good participation from our team on that one. We also have our monthly calendar of events that we're gonna be sharing with all the things that we have going on for end of October, I'm sorry, end of September through October. And then, of course, our top titles. We share our top titles every month for both fiction, nonfiction, as well as ebooks. So we'll be sharing that information again. And then lastly is our incident updates. Again, this is a newer item that we've been adding the last few months and don't wanna spill the beans, but very excited that we don't have any incidents to report for the last month. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Whittington, and she can provide the report.
Thank you, Director Finch, and good evening, Madam Chair and Trustees. So this is a really exciting program being launched by the California State Library. It's called the Zipbooks Palace Project. So patrons are able to request different types of ebooks and audiobooks through the Palace Project app. You are able to just download that right now and access the request ebooks and audiobooks form. This is separate from the Zipbooks program that currently runs inside the library, and it's not going to affect your monthly limit. So right now, I believe our monthly limit is at 1 to 2, and so it's not gonna affect your limit, so you can go in there and request as much as your heart desires. So if you have any more questions about the program, they can be sent to zipbooks@califa.org. So the California Library Association Conference is going to be in October, the 23rd through the 25th, in Riverside. The theme is going to be telling our own stories, and that was meant to empower the library community with their stories. And if you know any librarians or library workers, we have a lot of stories. And so that was, it's a way for us to support and encourage each other through our own stories while we give out stories to the community. So again, you are invited to attend, and we hope to bring back a lot of information from the staff members that are attending the conference. And if you want something a little bit more detailed, let me know, and then I can potentially ask the organizers if they could give me a little bit more information in what you're interested in. So we are really excited to see ReaderCon happening on September 28 at 1:00 p.m. This is our, this is in collaboration with the Friends of the Library, who we adore. And so we are excited, this is our second year having this event, and we hope to have at least 300 people come out and see ReaderCon. It's just gonna be a lot of fun, lot of planning, lot of stress, but it's also gonna be a lot of fun and fun for our community. We also have an event called the Taylor Swift Release Party. I was told that the new album is called Life of a Showgirl. I'm not a Swiftie, I'm just an ally. So the release party is for ages 12 and up. It's going to be on October 4 at 2:30. They're gonna have snacks, they're gonna have some fun, you're gonna make some friendship bracelets, maybe even meet new friends there. So come on down if you want to hang out with your fellow Swifties. And we have our Star Wars Day happening during our Star Wars Read Reading Challenge Month. It's, that is going to happen on October 6 at 3:00 p.m., and we may have some special guests arriving during then. It's for, this event is for all ages, and we're gonna have some crafts, we're gonna have some treats, we're gonna have some fun, and we hope that everybody can come out and not only sign up for Star Wars, the Star Wars Reading Challenge, but also just bring your families and just have some Star Wars fun. And then lastly, we have a paranormal investigation, which is ages 18 and up, on October 17 at 10:00. And we are going to, the library staff are gonna teach about standard paranormal practices and the tools needed for investigations, and then we'll allow the participants to go out into the library and do their own investigation. So we invite anybody over the age of 18 to come on out and find some more ghosts in the library, I guess. So these are the top titles in August. Obviously, Pokemon can never be defeated, but a lot of graphic novels are, have always been on our top titles list. And again, the reading, the primary phonics books also top 10, or sorry, on the top of the charts there. Dinosaurs of the World made it on this list, but, which is wonderful. And then lastly, our top ebooks for August was Handmaid's Tale by Margaret Atwood. This is our October Calendar of Events, and I just wanted to highlight that we have a coding class on Fridays, and that's for ages 10 to 15. We started this during Summer at Your Library, and it was actually very popular, so we decided to bring it back. So if you have anybody ages 10 to 15 that are interested in learning how to code, that would be a prime opportunity to come and test out our coding class. And then also, we have our Halloween Storytime on October 30. It starts at 10:15. Costumes are highly encouraged. We'll probably be in costume and, you know, be there and be square. And then immediately after the Storytime, we will have trick-or-treating inside the library. And as Director Finch had mentioned, very happy to see zeros all around for the month of August up until today. So it's nice. And then lastly, some upcoming items. Again, ReaderCon, get the word out, we want people to come. It starts at 1:00 and it's free. Star Wars Read starts on October 1, goes all the way until the end of the month. You can register via the Beanstack app. And then October 10 through the 11th is Hallow Weekend. On the 10th, we'll have an event here at the library, and then October 11 at HCC. And then lastly, October 28 is our Library Board of Trustees' Meeting. We'll have a report on the Heritage Room, and then somebody from the Mayor's Youth Council will be here to present. Any questions?
Ms. Backus, are there any speaker cards from the public?
No speaker cards from the public.
Are there any written comments from the public?
No written comments from the public.
Okay. Trustee Liddell, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Okay. Trustee Heinemann?
Well, it sounds like you're busy, busy again, so congratulations to all the people that are putting on these different activities, the paranormal one, ooh, that sounds interesting. So good job.
I just have to piggyback on what trustee Heinemann said. That sounds very interesting, and them coming to the library at night and-
Yes, it'll start at 10:00. We'll have a little introductory session, we'll give you your EMF meters, your divining rods, and then release you out into the library within reason, and you can start your own paranormal investigation of the library.
And so how long will they be there?
I believe the event ends at 11:30.
Okay, sounds interesting.
Can I just ask, is there a limit to the number of people that can sign up?
Yes, I believe we're gonna have a sign up occurring within the next couple of weeks, and so we were asking people to register prior.
Okay. Well, as usual, it looks like you have a busy month coming up in October. I like Hallow Weekend. Never thought of that, but it sounds great, and I'm sure a lot of people in our community will be able to take advantage of that. So thank you very much. Ms. Whittington? Okay, now we'll have our report given by Management Analyst One, Catherine Backus.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Trustees. I have a report to give to you on the budget for the Corona Public Library for fiscal year 26. Firstly, our overall community service budget is $20,057,685. In that, within that budget, we have a total library general fund budget of $1,903,293. And that library general fund budget consists of the library collection management, which is $1,262,141, and the literacy and community engagement, which is $641,152. We also have Measure X funds that are given to us by the city. And Measure X funds, this is a 1% sales tax increase that was approved by the voters in November of 2020. It's to provide locally-controlled funding for a variety of city services. These funds cannot be taken by the state or the county, so they're specifically City of Corona funds. So our Measure X funds are providing $528,381 to the library this year. And within that, we have three librarians, one office assistant, and two library assistants in that budget, which is over $300,000. We have e-media databases, which were normally funded by developer impact fees, and now are being funded by the Measure X funds, which is $125,000. We have been approved to purchase new self-check machines, which we've already received, and that was $48,190. They're also paying for our Collection HQ and Evidence Based Collection Development software for $13,574, and assisting with program expenditures, which is $21,665. And then there is our wonderful Friends of the Corona Public Library. The Friends of the Corona Public Library have agreed to donate $95,000 to us this year. And within that, it's $25,000 for the Summer at Your Library supplies, children's and teen area signage, which is including a new Word Cloud for $47,000, a new stage for the Francis Aldama Room for $8,000, which I think is being delivered today. And also, $15,000 for Hoopla e-media content, which is very popular. Other funding that we have this year is the capital improvement projects. We have for the elevator in the library HVAC, those are both over $300,000. Also, we have received the English as a Second Language ESL grant for FY '26, and that's $93,388. We're still waiting to get approval for the Adult and Family Literacy Grant, but we've requested $74,970. We still have the Building Forward Grant they're working on for the security cameras. They're saying that may go out to bid next week, fingers crossed. We also just received the Zipbook Grant for '26, which is $15,840. And then we have Developer Impact Fee available funds for $18,834. Developer impact fees pay for their fair share of the increased demand on local infrastructure and services. As development decreases, these funds also decrease. So that's just something to keep in mind. And that's about it for this year. Is there any questions?
Ms. Backus, are there any speaker cards from the public?
No speaker cards from the public.
Or any written comments from the public?
No written comments from the public.
Okay. Trustee Liddell, do you have any comments?
I do. Is Hoopla and Zipbook similar?
So Hoopla is just one of the platforms that we use for e-media. Zipbooks, the Zipbooks programs that we currently have at the library is just for print. So, but the Zipbooks Palace Project is an ebook, ebook and audiobook program given by the California State Library. So that's the distinction. So Zipbooks at the library for print, Hoopla is just for digital e-media.
I do use Hoopla, and I think it's amazing. It has almost every book I've looked up.
It has grown hand over fist over the last couple of years. It's one of our most popular apps that people use.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Heinemann, do you have any comments? Trustee Vice Chair Leonard, do you have any comments?
Just a quick question. So in terms of, this is all funding for the library, so the new Innovate Center doesn't apply?
No, that funding was actually for the current year, the, last year, so that Innovation Center should be completed by June of this year.
And Ms. Backus, do you, do you feel that these allotments are sufficient for what you need?
I think we're gonna hope so.
Okay.
If Hoopla gets as many uses as we had last year, maybe not, but we hope so.
Okay, great. I mean, it seems like it's very well-funded to me, so I'm happy to see that. Okay, next we'll have a report given by Library Manager Danielle Whittington, Policies Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going to bring three policy updates to your attention, and I would like for the Library Board of Trustees to review and recommend the updates to the Code of Conduct Policy, the Study Room Policy, and the Collection Development Policy. So we're gonna start with the Code of Conduct Policy. The changes are, we are adding in photography, filming, and stalking to prohibited conduct. It's just an additional safety measure for our staff and our patrons, especially for our littles. We wanna make sure that people that are coming in to film at the library, like in a professional sense, not to infringe on anybody's First Amendment rights to film in a public place, but if you are there to film for a project or an event, we wanna make sure that you have permission prior to doing that. Also, wheel, large wheeled items like your bicycles, shopping carts are not allowed into the library. Also, the charging of wheeled items, so any of those motor scooters that you see around the little mini e-bikes, any of those, we're not allowing charging inside the library because the charging poses a fire risk. We are also allowing eating and drinking, specific foods in specific areas. So as you probably know, we have new vending machines that have both coffee and snacks. And we are asking that eating and drinking is not allowed by any of the computers or tech areas and our heritage room. So those are the areas that we are not allowing food, but we also ask that you clean up after yourself. So, you know, we're allowing these snacks, prepackaged snacks, because, let's be honest, people are already eating in the library. We just wanna make sure you're doing it in a way that is not only respectful to our space but for others as well, and not leaving crumbs for the little ants to come and, to come and find. And so this actually helps us reach one of our strategic goals, actually a year in advance, in our Innovative Spaces Plan for offering more coffee and other drinks. We are not allowing any hot foods, so french fries, I'm just thinking of like Costco pizza, like any of the, like, hot items that are going to smell up the library, we're not allowing. No meals, so no salads, no, I don't know, Cane's Chicken Tender Meals, none of that, and no meal delivery. So we are making sure that you're, if you're there and you need a snack, you can have your snack, but a snack is not a rack of lamb, and so we wanna make sure that is specified. Believe me, somebody will come in with a rack of lamb. And then also, we are going to potentially offer no trespass orders after the third violation. And just so that you know, in the last, in fiscal year '25, we only had two people with fourth violation. So it's not something that is going to be a common occurrence. We just wanna put some additional, I guess, teeth to those violation letters that we sent out. Very, we are adding the Freedom to View and the additional statements that follow that. And again, it's noted on Section 3.1, and this is due to the passing of AB 1825 back in 2024, if I'm not mistaken. And so all of these edits needed to be made by, literacy grants, our Building Forward Grant, we wouldn't be able to apply for those moving forward if those additional edits were not made. The Lost and Found Policy, we remove the CMC reference that relates to the Police Department. We're not the Police Department. And then also, items are going to be kept for 30 days instead of 90 days because after 90 days, we have boxes of items, just sort of sitting in our, in our admin area, and instead, we would rather, at the end of those 30 days, donate those as we usually do. So to sum it up, the Code of Conduct addresses additional disruptive behavior, the allowance of food and drink, and then prohibiting the charging of large electronic devices. Food in the library, again, is permitted with exceptions in location, with exceptions in locations. Our Lost and Found Policy updates allow items to be kept for- Our Lost and Found Policy updates allow items to be kept for 30 days instead of the previous 90. And the Collection Development Policy updates are required so that we are in compliance with AB 1825, and that is the California Freedom to Read Act. So to sum it up, I would like for you to review and recommend the updates to the Code of Conduct Policy, Study Room Policy, and the Collection Development Policy.
Can I ask a question?
Well, I have, in a minute, I'll give you a minute to ask. Ms. Backus, are there any speaker cards from the public?
No speaker cards from the public.
Are there any written comments from the public?
No written comments.
Read and Freedom to View is, it just adds another layer of transparency when it comes to libraries, so people are able to come in and view what they need to. Yeah, that's, that's just, it's just another, it's just another way to give people access to the information and the items that they need.
Okay, thank you.
We don't yet. We haven't had an issue yet. But we have, the librarians and the library staff have been really diligent in making sure that people are eating in the areas that they're supposed to eat. We have, I did let them know that if it starts to become unruly, where we, again, are seeing, you know, bones from the rack of lamb left by the computers, then we would probably come back to you and say, never mind, we don't need food in the library. But we wanted to offer this as a chance for people to come in. I mean, we see moms in there all the time with their little ones, you know, sneaking them fruit snacks. And we're just like, it's okay, it's just a fruit snack. And so we wanted to make sure that the library is a little bit more open and hospitable for those that are there to study for long periods of time, or, you know, have cranky toddlers that really, really need their fruit pouch.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Leonard, do you have any comments or questions?
I just want to know how you landed on a rack of lamb.
Haven't had dinner yet.
Dinner's on the brain. Manager Whittington, how is that going with the food?
So far, it's been good. We are in the process of receiving some lids for the coffee machine, so that'll, that'll help a little bit. We haven't had any spills. We have had, you know, some of our teens like to leave things behind, but, you know, they're teens, that's just kind of what they do. But we make sure that when they're in their own area, we remind them that they need to clean up after themselves. We haven't had any really, we haven't had a lot of pushback. There's always going to be one or two people that want to push the envelope and do a little bit more and a little bit more. But for the most part, in this sort of soft launch of allowing food in the library, it's been very successful.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. Do they know, the patrons know that they can?
So with the additional vending machine that has been put in, that has not only beverages, but it also has snacks in there, it's kind of like a wink and a nod that, oh, you can, you can have that here. And so that's, that was our soft launch in allowing food in the, in the library.
Okay, and how long has that been going?
For about a month, a little over a month, yeah.
Okay, so it's still in progress.
It's still in progress, not too many issues.
Yeah, well, great. That's great. Okay, we need to have a motion to accept the policy. What's the lingo for it? Help me out, Danielle.
You need to submit a motion, somebody needs to submit a motion to accept the policies, the policy updates.
I move that we accept the Corona Library Policy Updates.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, so a motion was made by Trustee Heineman and seconded by Trustee Liddell. Ms. Backus, will you please take a vote?
Chair Kennerly?
Approve.
Vice Chair Sharice Leonard?
Approve.
Trustee Heineman?
Approve.
And Trustee Liddell?
Approve.
All right. Now we have a report given by Library Specialist Two, Martin Villegas. Martin?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Trustees, for allowing me to give a quick presentation on our Veterans Connect at the Library Program. So, here we go. So for those of you who may be unaware, maybe watching from home, what the Vets Connect at the Library Program does is provide service to local veterans and their families. Essentially, the State Library determined some years ago that local, or veterans weren't accessing the benefits like they should. Maybe they didn't know about them, maybe they didn't know how to access them. So the State Library developed the Veterans Connect at the Library Program to help bridge the gap between veterans and their benefits. And so there are several local libraries, including ours, that have a Veterans Connect at the Library Resource Office. So that is one of the main things that we do, is we host office hours on Wednesdays from 10 to 12, and we have a volunteer there who helps veterans answer questions about, you know, healthcare, housing, jobs, or employment, really anything that comes up, burials, any kind of honors or awards that they might be entitled to. So we really provide a person for them to talk to, instead of maybe submitting forms online, calling, you know, phone lines and being on hold for several minutes, if not hours. So it really helps, again, bridge the gap and kind of let the veterans know that somebody is there for them in their community. Apart from that, we also try to do our best to be at city events whenever we can. And occasionally, we host programs at the library as well. So picture there, you see our Resource Fair from last year. So pretty decent turnout for our veterans, and we all kind of enjoyed a hot meal and some snacks, along with good discussion with each other and those local organizations that were there. We do have some new team members, although they continue to be very shy. So instead of our team members there, you have pictured a recent council meeting where we were awarded a $1,000 donation by the Corona Elks Foundation, so thank you to them again. But David is our lead volunteer. He is a former VA team member, and so he brings with him a wealth of knowledge that we constantly tap into when it comes to some more kind of higher-level situations that might come up. Sally is our book club stalwart, so she has been very good about keeping the book club running. Those gentlemen and, I guess, gentlewomen now, everybody that arrives, they're early every single week for the book club. They enjoy meeting together, they enjoy the books that they discuss, they enjoy the time that they spend at the library, and we enjoy supporting them. So Sally has been leading that for us for several years now and continues to do so, so thank you, Sally. Ms. Carol is one of our newer volunteers. She has been kind of the main person that we've had in the office hours lately. So she has kind of passed her training and is capable of sitting and assisting veterans kind of on her own. And then we have Rose and John. Shortly after I created this presentation, John actually mentioned that he did have other obligations that he had to attend to. So we might not be seeing much of John in the meantime, but he is eager to come back whenever his schedule allows him to. And so Rose will be one of the newer volunteers that is currently in training. And so we're eager to get her kind of caught up to speed in the world of veterans and benefits and VA and our local organizations. So we're excited to have potentially expanded office hours in the future with Rose. So right now, what's been keeping us busy is the Veterans Memorial Project. So as you may be aware, the city decided to revamp kind of the whole area of the existing memorial outside of City Hall. And so they went with a design that is much bigger than the previous memorial. And so one of the responsibilities that we have been asked to help with is to track down the records and names of fallen service members from Corona. So Tracy Martin reached out to us a couple of weeks ago to see what kind of records the city might have. And it does so happen that we have some of that information stored in the Heritage Room. And then, any more modern records, we have one of our volunteers helping us track those down as well. Most of those will be stored in the National Archives, so they do require written requests, for some reason. They require written requests mailed to them in order to receive any kind of records from the National Archives. But we are trying to see if we can get anybody who has maybe already done that work locally, specifically the Corona Vet Center. So we've reached out to some local organizations that might already have that information on hand. But the goal is, again, to provide a complete and updated list for the new memorial so that those service members can be properly honored on that memorial. We hope to finalize one kind of big project for us to work on in the winter. So we've had some ideas come up, mainly something like a clothing drive or shoe drive for homeless veterans who might be in the area. The holidays tends to be kind of a depressing time for veterans, and it is something that kind of the VA is also aware of, so we can work with local organizations to maybe do something to boost mental health. So that would be something where we would plan some sort of social event or gathering here in the city, maybe even at the library, to kind of just bring them together and to, you know, let them know that somebody is there for them and to remind them of that. We also have the idea of a friendship bench. And if you're not familiar with the friendship bench, it is kind of a, it's kind of like a one-on-one therapy session hosted at a park bench. And so two things happened simultaneously. One of our book club members brought up the idea of a friendship bench to me, and the city announced that they were doing this updated memorial. So we are trying to see where in the memorial plans it might be possible to just kind of maybe put a plaque on an existing bench, designating it as a friendship bench. But that organization is a nonprofit that provides training for volunteers to essentially provide some kind of minor counseling to anybody that might be going through something. And so a friendship bench for us would more, it would look more like an opportunity to essentially host office hours outside of the Veterans Connect Office. So if veterans are going to be at this memorial already, we kind of want to have a volunteer or staff member there, just in case they visit and have questions about the benefits, or maybe they're just going through something and they need somebody to talk to. We would like to be the person that they talk to. So that's an opportunity that has arisen. And then, of course, another one of our veterans is really eager to host a leadership workshop. So he does have some experience with public speaking, some experience being an instructor for things like the Seven Habits of Highly Successful People. So he's willing and able to be engaged with our local veterans to get that, to get that done. And of course, we do have some grants that are coming up that we're looking forward to applying to. So again, with that meeting and our ideas, we'll be able to kind of put together an application for those as well. So the other thing that the Veterans Connect at the Library Program does is outside of our office and resources and benefits, we host the book club. And so I've mentioned that a couple of times. It is a bi-weekly book club. They meet on the first and third Wednesday of each month from 10:30 to 12 PM in the boardroom, 10:30 AM to 12 PM in the boardroom downstairs. We provide the coffee, the group usually brings their own donuts, and they have gained members within the past year, and they read a variety of books. So up on the screen, you'll see some books that they've read in the past since our last update, and some books that they're gonna read for the rest of the year. So we have Paradise Lost by John Milton, Tales of Two Rivers Trading Posts written by Jack Clark and the Johnny Griffiths. So that was an exciting time for our book club. Johnny Griffiths being one of the two members who used to lead our Veterans Connect at the Library, now retired in Arizona, wrote his own book. So congrats to Johnny and Ellie and Jack Clark. They read Code Girls by Liza Mundy, which I think also got turned into a show or a movie, but it was a, it's a really good story. And coming up next, they have Silent Victory, which is kind of the end-all, be-all when it comes to the Pacific Theater in World War II. It is a very thick book full of excellent, excellent stories and historical facts about pretty much the entire Pacific Battle between the US and Japan. They're gonna be reading A World Without Counselor, The Story of Item B-17 by Dr. G. Edward Griffin, and they're gonna round up the year with The Woman by Kristin Hannah. So that is all that I have as far as updates. I'd like to give another shout-out to all the groups that have donated to the Veterans Connect at the Library Program over the past year, including the Amber Waves of Grain Committee, the Corona Elks Lodge, Vice Chair Leonard and family, and the Women's Improvement Club of Corona. So thank you all again, and if you have any questions, I am here.
Well, thank you for the report. Ms. Backus, are there any speaker cards from the public?
No speaker cards from the public.
Are there any written comments from the public?
No written comments from the public.
Okay. Trustee Liddell, do you have any comments, questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'm in awe of the passion that you have for this project. You know what you're doing. I'm just, I'm impressed. I've known you, like I said earlier, since fourth grade. And I'm just, I'm so proud to know you because you put such a passion into something that really needs more attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you say you've been knowing him since fourth grade?
Yes.
That's what I thought you said.
I have stories.
Stories, huh? Awesome. Okay, Trustee Heineman, do you have any questions or comments?
I am amazed that you have such a variety of things, and it's really driven by a lot of volunteers. But I know that you are the guiding light that give them that drive to do it. And I know I'm involved with the Vet Center through my Kiwanis Club, and so I'm in awe that Corona does so much between the library and the Vet Center for the veterans. So thank you very much.
We do our best.
Vice Chair Leonard?
We've talked about this before, but I cannot thank you enough for all that you do for our library, just you in particular, Martin, because you wear many hats on any given day. It's not even like, one day you do this, next day you do, you do multiple jobs in any one given day. So I appreciate you. But I also really appreciate the passion that you have for the Vets Connect and at the library. Thank you, Library Manager Whittington, for, for providing this because, you know, my, I am the daughter of a veteran. My dad, like, he, that is his proudest part of his, I would love to say it's my sister and I, but I'm not entirely sure. I think the proudest part of his life was the time that he served in the Air Force. And so for many of these men and women, that's their, that's their crowning achievement. They were, they were a part of our military service, and it's all-encompassing, right? When you're in the military, my, my daughter's boyfriend is in the Navy, and she wants to go into service, and so this is just, I, I just can't thank you enough for providing this service. And then, just two quick thoughts. Have you guys checked with Gold Star Moms for the, any service members lost in the city of Corona? Because we have our Blue Star and Gold Star Moms. And then also the Riverside National.
Yes, I will be checking in with those groups, depending on how complete of a record we're able to kind of find on our own. But yes, thank you for the kind words.
That was awesome. I, I had a quick question about the book club. It says that it meets on the first and third Wednesdays. So do they take the entire month to read one book? And they do maybe part of it on the first, and then read the rest of it and come back and report the second meeting?
So from the times that I've been privileged to sit in with them and discuss some of the reading that they've been doing, they kind of do it in shifts where, at the start of the month, they will usually pick up the new book, and they'll be finishing up the previous book. So by the time they meet in the middle of the month, they're already well into the book that they just picked up. And so what that does is it kind of gives them a chance to talk about the new book, but at the same time, talk about differences between books. And a lot of the discussion, a lot of the themes that come up are the same from one book to another. And so they get to talk about how different themes are presented between the two books, and not just stuck on discussing one book. So I think that format does work out for them. They seem to enjoy it a lot. But it really gives them an opportunity to not only talk about one book that they've read, but also compare it to the book that they just read, or the book that comes right after.
That's awesome. Now, you mentioned, is the memorial still being worked on?
Yes, that is slated, I think, to be finished, if I remember correctly. It was supposed to be opened by Veterans Day this year.
Oh, soon.
If I could chime in, so it is on track to be completed by Veterans Day. The Community Services Department is working right now on planning a Veterans Day event at the memorial, so you should be hearing some information about that soon.
Okay, that's great. Well, I think that's wonderful. Like all the other trustees said, you're doing a fantastic job, and it's obvious that it's a passion of yours, you know? So that just comes through with all of the activities and things you have. That's very good, Martin. Well, that about wraps it up. Trustees, do you have any other comments before we, Trustee Heineman? Comments?
Well, it, it sounds like we're starting our new year well. We have the budget and everything, so I look forward to all the activities. And I know that that creative library crew will be coming up with lots of wonderful things for the year. Thank you so much.
Trustee, Vice Chair Leonard?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know if I've said it enough, but the direction that our library has taken under um you at the helm, Ms. Whittington, has just been amazing, and it's not to say that, that your staff wasn't amazing before that, but the direction has just been um admirable, because now we have so many events. I don't remember there being this many events before, and events that I'm, maybe it's just that I wasn't necessarily excited about them, but like, oh, paranormal investigating, that's awesome! I don't know what that says about me, by the way, but um it's just really awesome to see. The Vets Connect, I think, is fabulous, our, our library on the go is amazing, um, all the children's programs, the Innovation Center, like, it just seems like our library is non-stop, and I love it, and I'm here for it, and I'm super excited about this Sunday um for Reader Con, um, 66 authors. I, I hope we have more than 300 people, um, 300 kids. I'm a little scared if we have more than 300 kids, but I, I'm hoping that we have more than 300 kids. And all of the things that the library and the friends are doing in tandem, so again, I just want to tell you all how much I appreciate you and everything that you do for the, the city.
Uh, trustee Liddell?
Just a few plugs. One, one of my students actually comes to the library every day after school for an hour to get his homework done. And I saw him one day here, and he was so excited, and I was excited to see him, and I knew that he was here, but I said, why are you here? And he says, I'm getting my homework done, so I can go home and play. I was like, oh, what a great idea. The second is Martin actually leads the field trips for elementary school students as well, and so he leads our class when we, our school, when we come in third grade for learning about the community and the library, so.
Has your student discovered your picture on the wall yet?
Yes, they take pictures of themselves with me in the background and send them to me all the time.
I told the student it was a secret, my secret identity.
Like, don't send those to me anymore. I'm just kidding, but I just, yeah, I am so thankful to, and in not being involved in the library for so long, when the kids, my kids got older, and now coming back, seeing so many opportunities, so. Also, Danielle, can you send me the slides? Do you mind? And I'll start posting those on Dojo. All right, thank you.
I was just bragging about the library today to a friend of mine in Atlanta. I said, if we had had libraries like this when we were growing up, that's where we would have been all the time, you know, just based on the kind of kids that we were and are. Like everybody said, you all are doing a fantastic job, and it's always something new and exciting to look forward to, so uh we, like uh trustee Ruth said, we're looking forward to this new year, right? Okay, yes.
Sorry, one more thing came to mind. I don't know who was in charge in planning the district librarian luncheon, but whoever was in charge was fabulous. My librarian, so my librarian came back to school with her flash drive, she was all excited about it, said, hey, can you print all of these flyers for me? And we're in Eastvale, but we're, but Corona is the largest public library anywhere near us, and she created a bulletin board in the library for all of the events that are happening at current, at the library, and um so whatever happened at that librarian luncheon was amazing.
That was led by our amazing library supervisor, Jennifer Bowserman.
Well, thank you for all the hard work and all the work that you do, all of you, uh, Ms. Finch as well. Well, uh, thank you for joining us for the Library Board of Trustees meeting. We will adjourn this meeting today at 6:21. The next meeting of the Library Board of Trustees will be on October 28th, 2025, at 5:30. Thank you.
Probably 1976, I was four or five years old. I saw the firefighters, I saw the engines, and I told my mom on the way home, all I could talk about was being a firefighter. Here I am, and 31 years later, in the city of Corona, it's a dream come true. Who would have known that the city of Corona, I was born and raised in Orange County, and the city of Corona would be my second home, but all the guys and gals here in this department, they're your second family. It's my morning routine, coming in here, making sure the cabs set up, where we need to get set up. Actually, we got a call right now.